Order at 6:01 PM. This is the Board of Directors regular school board meeting for Monday, March 20th, 2023. Welcome to all of our visitors, guests, and media. We're going to start tonight, as always, with the Board and administration roll calls. Mr. Felton here, Mr. Burns.
Here.
Ms. Schultz.
Here.
Ms. Getzko.
Here.
Ms. Nathan.
Here.
Mr. O'Neal.
Here.
Mr. Schuler.
Here.
Mr. Henen.
Here.
Mr. Gertin.
Here.
Ms. O'Connell.
Here.
Ms. Gronseth.
Here.
Ms. Dimmler.
Here.
Mr. Veal.
Here.
Mr. Samansky.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There were no public comments submitted prior to the meeting, so if I can get a motion to approve the agenda and addendums.
I'll approve the agenda and addendums as presented.
Have a motion made by Ms. Getzko, seconded by Mr. O'Neal. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda, which includes the regular school board meeting minutes for February 27th, 2023, the personnel consent agenda, and the business consent agenda.
Move approval as presented.
Second.
Hunter, I'm going to abstain from voting on this one since I'm up for one of the roles.
Sounds like a plan.
On the personnel consent.
Awesome. So I have a motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Schultz, with Mr. O'Neal abstaining. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the recognitions, presentations, and showcase. It's going to be Mr. Samansky?
Mr. Samansky, yes.
Looks like you got your hands full tonight. It's a good problem to have, exactly.
A glass of water.
Got all sorts of certificates. All sorts of good things. First off, just want to thank the Board for allowing us to recognize all of our wonderful participants and students. One update, the unfortunate thing is we have a band trip going on right now. Not that that's unfortunate, but we're going to be missing an awful lot of our students. So really, tonight, we just want to introduce, and the ones that are here, great. The ones that aren't here, we're still going to say great job to them when we see them. But just an update. One of our Excel recipients, Lindsay Penagor. How the Excel works, if you remember, it is one male, one female, from every school in the state of Minnesota. We send that information in to the state, and then they narrow it down to their top 35. Why 35, I'm not sure. 32 kind of makes a little bit more sense to me, but they go with 35. Well, the good news is Lindsay is a Excel finalist, so she is one of the top 35 in the state, so congratulations, Lindsay. Also, another award for us this winter, as voted on by the coaches in the Coaches Association, Section 5A Assistant Coach of the Year, Michael Erickson.
Thank you for having us up here tonight. Just give a real quick recap before we recognize our state participants. I'm Kurt Becker, Bill McDonald, the head wrestling coaches here. We had a great season. We were the conference champions for the first time since 2018 for the team. As a overall, we finished 23-3 on the year, with our only losses being to the state runner-up New Prague twice, and Becker, who was third place in state. So we lost in the section finals by five, and ended the season placing fifth. So phenomenal season for the team, and then for our young men that placed in the, or qualified for state. Two of them could not be here tonight because they're actually training for the U.S. World Trials for the Joel and Titan Frederickson. So Joel's 106-pounder, he placed fourth at state his first appearance. And Titan was our state champion and the first state champion since this guy right here to finish the season undefeated. So congratulations to Joel and Titan.
It's a lot harder nowadays.
Oh, yeah. Then Caleb Mead qualified at 120 pounds despite only weighing 113 pounds this year. Although he says he's weighed more than that now, so Caleb.
He won the USA Men's State Tournament yesterday. He was training too. He's not done yet Saturday, rather.
Then Jonah Hamburger. Jonah was a three-time state qualifier for us. He's a senior this year. And then Bryce Burkett. Bryce placed second for us this year as a sophomore. This is also his third state appearance.
He's going to Vegas, too.
For wrestling tournament. He's not old enough to enjoy it. And then Ian Baru, our smallest guy on the team. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just told my other coaches they have to come up, and they're kind of hesitant on this. So I'm Maury Seeling, and I coach the mock trial team at Watertown Mayor High School. This is my assistant coach, Sarah Solley, and my attorney coach, Pat Nathan. And Pat's going to be in charge of giving out these three certificates when we get to that point, Sarah gets to read them. Our varsity, we have two teams, and our varsity team went 5-0 in the region, went to the state tournament, and we placed seventh out of 16 teams. We were ahead of 2-1 trial record. It was a great year because it was kind of a rebuilding year. We lost 10 seniors last year, and so these kids that came together really had to put in a lot of work to move up and fill those shoes, and they really did. So congratulations to them. Did a nice job. I'm going to have Sarah read the names of our people who are not here because of, as you heard, banned competitions and so forth. And then the last three, we'll call them up here, are the people who are here.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay. All right. So the first certificate is for Bennett Meyer, who was the witness. Riley Delaney, who was the witness. Nora Delaney was an attorney. Eliza Rowan was a witness. Kate Drawash was an attorney, and she won an All-State Attorney Award, so congratulations to Kate. Logan Bimberg was an attorney, and then Morgan Juncuski was a witness, and they are unable to attend today. And the three who are here, we have Ella Hunkins, who was a witness, and our All-State Witness Award winner. All right. And then we have, next on the list is Julia Otto. She's our senior. She was an attorney. And then finally, we have Kennedy Olson, who was an attorney on both sides of our team this year. Double duty. All right. And that's it. Thank you.
I will sub tonight for Ms. Mazrata. She is not able to be here tonight. BPA, which competed in state just last weekend. The state participants, and I know, again, we only have a couple of them here, so when your name is called, please come on up. We have Caleb Barnhart, Logan Bimberg, Claire Brandonberg, Eric Costello, Jonah Hamburger, Ava Hune, Jack Jewson, Justin Kind, Lindsay Penagor, Jacob Rowan, and Albert Rundell. And then these folks will be advancing to Nationals, and Nationals are...
April 26th to 30th.
April 26th to the 30th. So advancing to Nationals, Logan Bimberg, Claire Brandonberg, Eric Costello, Jonah Hamburger, Ava Hune, Jack Jewson, Justin Kind, and Lindsay Penagor. Congratulations.
You met Mike, or he had a kind of a bet about the hair there, so anyway.
Does he have to keep it until next season?
Yeah, yes.
Touched it up for the meeting today.
I'm Steve Hangartner, the head coach for the gymnastics, and my lovely wife over there is assistant, right there, Dave Hangartner, so she's there. We got Mike. We had a really great year this year. The girls were really persevered throughout the year, a lot of things. There was, we won the Wright County Conference. We had to go against Norwood, or not Norwood. New London Spicer was rated sixth at the time, and we were 11th, and we ended up defeating by over five points. So that was, for the girls, really stepped up. And then they went on to the state meet, qualified at a state meet, and finished fourth, four tenths out of third, so really good accomplishment. We did have a few of the girls that didn't make it. I'll read out their names first. Callie Jackson, Hadassa Gonzalez, Kate Gilmore, Maddie Sanders, Julia Kove, and Desi Bergstrom. As far as the other girls, I'll call them up here. We got, first of all, I'll have Hala Anthony, come on up. Hala is an eighth grader, and she competed on the bars at the state tournament. Then we have Grace McCabe. Grace is also an eighth grader. She competed on the floor exercise. Next, we have Evelyn Melkey. Did all-around throughout the year, and at the state meet, she did everything except for bars, right?
Beam.
Beam.
Okay.
And she did, she vaulted as individual on the vault and had her highest score of the year, 9.15. Next, we have Maggie McCabe. Maggie made it as an all-arounder at the state meet. So she had to compete two days in a row, eight routines, so she had a lot, she did an unbelievable job, had her highest score in the vault, 9.5, and scored over a 36 on the all-around, and actually beat her mom in the all-around, too. Keep that in there. Mom's probably watching on TV. Okay, Peyton Hexel. Peyton made it on the balance beam and competed on the floor and the vault at the state meet. Reagan Kelly. Reagan did exceptionally well. Something I'm not sure how many people have ever done, she won the all-around two years in a row, and it was really interesting to see how well she was focused. I learned something from her. It's almost like, when Star Tribune interviewed me, it's almost like Tiger Woods, when you see him so focused, that's what she was like. I didn't even want to get in her way and mess up anything. She was just unbelievable, everything. She was moving on to the next step. If there was anything that, any kind of glitch, it was like totally positive, so unbelievable job. And she also had the highest score we've ever had at Watertown in her all-around, so.
Well, thank you, guys. That's awesome of all the achievements. Moving on to our next presentation from To Be Continued. Mrs. Dean? Yeah, you guys don't have to stick around if you want.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Congratulations.
Tim's like, wait, what?
I was going to say, one more thing, I forgot to say this. Well, they're leaving now, but anyway, the one other neat thing, this kind of relates to all you guys, we kept our winning streak going, too, by beating New London Spicer, and now we have, and it's easy to remember because we have 111 wins in a row, so 1-1-1, District 111. So I thought that was kind of neat.
I like it.
Thank you.
Great. Love it.
That's a tough act to follow, all those achievements. Wonderful. Well, thank you for having me. My name is Tammy Dean, and I am the founder and executive director of To Be Continued. I reside over in Arlington, but I grew up in Lester Prairie, so this is kind of like home for me as well. And I founded To Be Continued after losing my sister to suicide in 2017. She was 43 years old, a mental health nurse, and what appeared to be full of life. And after founding the organization, we have just grown by leaps and bounds, doing things in the community and for professionals. And we are now very grateful for the opportunity to be at Watertown Mayor Schools. Heidi was instrumental in that. Heidi's sister-in-law, Renee Getzke, is a close friend of our families and was very close to my sister Shelley. So I believe this is being recorded, right? So I do want to, because of that, want to say that just some safety things. Suicide can be very complex, and so there is help available. 988 is a national number that everybody should know about and reach out if there's anything that is of concern. And I do have magnets here, and you're welcome to take those back to the school and have them available, and feel free to take them into your communities as well. So my sister Shelley, our maiden name was Tubert, and her nickname was Tubi, and so that's where the Tubi comes from. And Continued is really the passion for the work that she had in mental health. We're both nurses. She was my baby sister, followed in my footsteps. I'm a nurse practitioner down at Minnesota State Mankato in the College Health Clinic, and before that, I worked in the hospital and clinic over in Glencoe for most of my career, doing a lot of emergency room and med surg kinds of things. And I would always tell her, you know, you just keep taking care of those mental health patients, and I'll keep taking care of patients who are having heart attacks. And so it seemed like they were two different career paths, and now, you know, I just lived in such a narrow, focused mind, and now I realize how much they cross over. In fact, 30 years before my sister died, and two years after my husband and I were married, his brother took his life. And so we lived those next 30 years with me thinking that it wouldn't possibly happen in my family, just didn't have that on my radar. And so I'm just somebody who advocates to say it doesn't discriminate, it doesn't discriminate against socioeconomic status or region of which you live, or all the other things that possibly can be, sound discriminative. It happens in many families, and there is help available. So we've been around since 2019, and our mission is to increase awareness of suicide prevention, mental health, and wellness through advocacy, education, and outreach. We service an eight-county area. Initially, we started thinking we were going to focus on four counties, Carver, Meeker, McLeod, and soon words spread about us, the work that we did, and so we actually have now identified those eight counties as our primary service area, and we want to make sure that we are saturated in these counties before we reach out further. So this is our local service area, and I'm happy to have you as part of it. This is our school board, or our school board, this is our Board of Directors, and we come from a variety of backgrounds and from a variety of communities, Lester Prairie, Glencoe, Nord Young America, Winthrop, just to name a few. And we quickly grew to a staff of what we have now is five people, and most of them are instructors, and in fact, some of them come to your school. So the reason why we do this is, you know, one in three high school students were struggling before the pandemic even started, and so we know that there is ways for us to make an impact. And I won't go through the details of the statistics, but all of that really doesn't matter. If any of you've ever been touched by it, you know that it only is the one that you lost that really touches your heart and worth doing all the work that you do. So we do community outreach. We are at schools, doing, some schools will have mental health wellness days, and so that happens to be Nord Young America's last year. We are in Praids. We have yard signs. I think there were a few yard signs that were delivered in Watertown and Mayor last year. In fact, we distributed over 600 yard signs in the month of May during Mental Health Awareness Month, and we will do that again this year, so feel free to request them. They are free. And we'll also be at the Carver County Fair again. We have a suicide loss bereavement support group that meets in Hutchinson on a monthly basis. We also have a support packet if there is a family that has experienced death. We have some evidence-based information that we can provide. In fact, I want to stress the importance of, the work that we do is always evidence-based. We don't just make things up. For whatever reason, we want to make sure that the information we deliver is evidence-based. So we do community trainings like QPR, which is the mental health version of CPR, Safe Talk for Ag, which is another suicide prevention training, and it has a modified component that focuses on Ag-related communities. In fact, more suicides in Minnesota occur in greater Minnesota than do in the seven-county metro area. And I know that Carver is part of that seven-county metro area, but you also have somewhat of a landscape of a rural community. So just something that a lot of people don't always realize. Our biggest training that we offer is Mental Health First Aid. And Mental Health First Aid is three platforms, the adult and the youth are eight-hour courses. The adult one is for adults who interact with adults, and it focuses on mental health disorders, substance abuse disorders, crisis and non-crisis situations. And then the youth Mental Health First Aid is for adults who interact with youth. So those are for parents, teachers, and anybody else who has an interaction with youth. Again, it's an eight-hour course and focuses on a lot of the same things that the adult version is, only it's, of course, focused on the youth. And then there's the Teen Mental Health First Aid Program, which is a curriculum, and that is what we have at Watertown Mayor. We just, I'm not sure if we're finished or in the midst of it, to be honest, because I kind of oversee everything, but I don't know the day-to-day where they're at. But it's four sections that we teach in a history class, and it is a six-lesson curriculum. So let me just step back a second and explain Teen Mental Health First Aid is an evidence-based training that has, it's a six-lesson component, and we are, we must teach it to an entire grade level. It's been approved for 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, and we must teach it in class sections that are typical for the school. It's a large assembly is not allowed because of safety reasons. So we have four sections at Watertown Mayor, and we have certified instructors who come in and deliver that into the classroom, and at the end, they get a certificate. It covers things like anxiety, depression, bullying, substance abuse, eating disorders, just really a vast variety of it. And the main emphasis of it is to follow this action plan, which is really a skillset that they'll have going into adulthood. And it also teaches teens to reach out for themselves or for somebody, a friend of theirs, to reach to a trusted adult in time of need. That's a very critical thing for youth to know, and so that is one of the emphasis of that. Before we can come in and teach Teen Mental Health First Aid, we must teach at least 10% of the school building in youth Mental Health First Aid, so they know how to respond to it. They, meaning teachers, staff, and other personnel, really. We know that everybody is part of that school community. And so I happen to be at the class for part of it when it was taught last August, and I was just want to compliment the administration because it was a full class of 30. Usually, we have one class of 15 as kind of where we stand, but Watertown Mayor asked for more seats, and so we brought in two instructors, and we taught a full class of 30. So thank you for advocating for that, for your building. It's commendable. So we are in nine schools, and before, I have to back up, we, it costs us about $2,500 to teach 30 students, and so it's about a $10,000 investment in your community. And we did receive some special funding from both the Lions and the American Legion from Watertown, so we appreciate that very much, along with the other sponsors that are listed here. We are in nine school districts this year, and by the time we are done in June, we will have reached about 1,200 students. And we hope that this isn't a one-and-done. We hope that we'll be able to come back next year and provide that for your students once again. We also do a professional conference for continuing education. We bring in nationally-known speakers, state speakers from MDH and whatnot, and provide continuing education credits for healthcare workers and educators. I think Mr. Henen sent a few people, came from Watertown Mayor this last year to our conference, and will hold it again this year. It's very inexpensive and provides a really a great day of networking. We have a website that has a vast amount of resources on it, including the Crisis Line, and I did bring some resources along as well. The main way that we raise our funding is through a Dancing Like the Stars event that we do, and that's coming up April 15th. There are a couple dance couples from the Carver County area, actually, three of them, one from Chaska, one from Nord Young America, and one from Waconia this year. So last year, this group raised a ton of money, and it really was a pivotal time for us to be able to get into more schools. We went from two schools to nine, so we are hoping for great results again this year. In Your Neck of the Woods, that date is wrong. It's now been switched to Saturday, September 9th. We will have a bike run that we do out of New Germany and also provide an educational day. So you make five stops, but you have to learn one step of the process for helping to save a life on each stop, so we try to embed education. And we're going to do a Legends of the Appri at the Village Hall in New Germany as a fundraiser in November, so looking forward to that as well. Mitch Hall from Waconia and his band are going to be the house band. So these are our sponsors for this year, and together we can make a difference. Thank you so much for having me. Any questions?
I do.
Yeah.
I know you said you were taking care of high schoolers. Would you be looking also into maybe getting younger people? I know a lot of kids, they seem to be suicidal. I would think probably earlier as well, possibly, unfortunately. Is there a way that your program would gear towards some younger kids, or is this, did you pick the teenagers, teenage years, as what we all know, everyone struggles during those years as well?
Yeah. Great question. So... So we chose an evidence-based program. And we are at, you know, we are only able to deliver it to that class, those classes that are, that they're approved for. And quite honestly, there are not, that I'm aware of, a lot of evidence-based training specifically geared for children under like age 15. It's kind of a challenging, it's hard to find curriculum for that, quite honestly. But I wanted to just back up a minute because I teach Changing the Narrative on Mental Health and Suicide. And it is a Minnesota Department of Health initiative to do more of an interactive training and to do exactly what it says, changing the narrative about mental health. And I am part of a cohort group who is adapting this program for youth. So I'm not sure how low in grade level we will be going, but I know it is a constant, not concern, but it's something that we strive to do is to continue to educate children. We know that we need to start really young. So thank you for asking.
No, I would just say, you know, Mental Health First Aid is not only in the school sectors, but also in the corporate world. And we're seeing a ton of education happening at the corporate sector. So love that it's coming into the schools. And I just thought it was the right program at the right time. So really glad that you guys were able to come in. And Mr. Henin was very amiable to bringing you all in. And I think it's going to be a great program.
And I would add to, Tammy, I think, you know, I thank Mr. Henin for inviting his staff. And I think he's proud of the fact when he offered it, I think he had probably over 80% of the staff sign up that day. And it wasn't something that was asked why they just did it. And I think the thing that I remember from that specific training last fall was that, you know, one of the high school teachers said, "We do so much training in terms of curriculum and bloodborne pathogens and all the things that we do at the beginning of the year, but we never talk about this." And this is training we've never had before. So as a parent, I know when he was speaking, he's speaking from a dad perspective of three young ladies at home. And again, he just said, "This was so meaningful, one of the best trainings that he had been a part of." So it was really resounding in terms of the staff feedback and keeps carrying forward. So thank you.
Great, great. And feed us that feedback from the classroom as well, because, you know, we're always wanting to learn and improve. So we're here to partner with you. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to our action items. First item is the acknowledgement of donations, contributions, and fundraising.
Mr. Chair, tonight, again, we bring forth a resolution accepting donations for the past month. Again, if you'd be so kind to read those off, so we can recognize those individuals and companies or organizations as well for their donation.
And then once it gets approved, then we accept the donation, so. Mayor Riverside 4-H Club for the Angel Fund. The Watertown Lions Club for Community Education Summer Youth Theater. Laura Glasgow for Robotics. Henning Excavating for Super Mileage. And Doug Knoll for Welding. So with those donations being pending at this point, is there a motion to approve those donations?
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Byrne, seconded by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. And thank you for those who donate month after month. Item B, the first and only read of district policies requiring annual review. Mr. Schuler.
Mr. Chair, tonight, we're recommending a first and only read of the following policies. I guess if you would say these are some of our easier policies, there's probably one page to each. Very, very minimal substantial changes to all of those, many of which look around the superintendent role. So not, and again, one-page policies for the superintendent is probably a good thing. But no, at this point, we're asking for a first and only read.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Who is it?
I'll speak.
And I'll second. So there's a motion made by Ms. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Felton. Any further discussion on the policies? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item C, the Watertown Mayor Facilities Handbook. Mr. Schuler and Ms. Dimler.
Yeah, we'll invite Mrs. Dimler up to introduce some of our changes to our facilities handbook. Mrs. Dimler's done a really nice job of doing some research on some area districts, as you may have seen the comparatives in the bylines there, and doing a nice job of vetting those out. I'll let her speak to a little bit more in depth in terms of the how and the why. But again, tonight, we're looking for passing forth the facilities handbook for 2023, 2024. Ms. Dimler.
Well, thank you so much. So two years ago, we really re-formatted the facilities policy and procedure document. And we haven't made any changes to that over the past two years, but we've been looking at it, revising it. And it's something that we intend to do every year, just to make sure we have all our policies and procedures stated the way we need them and to fit our facilities and our district. So what you have is a draft of the policies and procedures. Very few changes were made, formatting probably being the biggest. Putting it into a facilities handbook and aligning it with the other handbooks we have in the district. A few minor changes, for example, to facility or to the stadium, taking out just not, no dogs, but changing it to no animals. And then some other grammatical updates such as that. We also looked at those fees. Well, actually, before I go to fees, the forms. As we've been collecting these forms, we've looked at, what do we need to collect? What information, what don't we? So we streamlined those forms. And then we took a look at the fees. And the fees that you see in red are the ones that we have edited for this upcoming facilities. And we've looked at our surrounding districts and did a fee comparison to see where we are at in comparison to other districts. The fee comparison that we have is for the current year. And in talking to many of these districts, they're also looking at revising their fees for this upcoming 23, 24 year. So we looked at that, we compared where we were at. Some we did not change, some we even went down a little bit just because of how they're being used. But really tried to compare where we were and make sure we had fees in the right place. So that is our revised facilities policy and procedure handbook. Any questions?
And the Community Education Committee has also reviewed this.
And thank you so much. I actually even have that written down. Not only was it presented to the advisory group, but to our stakeholders. So all the different booster groups that use our facilities, some of our for-profit, like Velocity, RCTC, Youth Sports, have all had an opportunity to look at it. And I've sent out several reminders to say, hey, is anything feedback you have? And I've not received any feedback.
I would love to hear about why we have glitter not being permitted in the rest of the room. Not only listed once, but twice, and once in bold. So there has to be a story there, but not for this meeting.
We have some dance groups that are really prone to glitter.
Two of these directors nodding his head over there.
I think Mr. Becker and Mr. McDonald would also have a comment or two.
Any further questions? I'll make a motion to approve the Watertown Mayor Facilities Handbook.
Thank you. I'll second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Felton, seconded by Ms. Nathan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Onto the Bond Referendum project updates. Mr. Schuler, Mr. Vogel, and Mr. Reer. You were on the agenda, sir.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so it's not put in here in writing, but I believe everybody knows I decided to take a different opportunity. And I'm leaving ICS this Friday. So Mr. Reer will be taking over. My stead has obviously been here the whole time. So it should be pretty smooth. But we are doing kind of transition meetings to make sure that nothing gets dropped and everything gets finished out as we progress here. So moving through to our update. So from our last meeting, we have had a couple advancements in both our warranty claim with carpet and with marmolium. So for our carpet, first of all, we did meet out with the, we met with the manufacturer's rep at the first week of March. And he formally agreed that we are eligible for a full claim on two different colors. Mostly our peel and stick carpet that we use is the Kinetics brand. And for whatever reason, we seem to be seeing more of a defect in some of those seams. And so it's basically classrooms and then some bubble rooms that qualify. But it's a lifetime material labor warranty. So what we're going to do is try those, try those same colors in a glue-down fashion versus the peel and stick. We're also going to do a slightly different install, a quarter turn install versus laying it as a pattern in hopes that that will kind of dissipate any of our seam wear issues to give more of a, you know, they don't, their materials don't specifically state that that needs to be in a quarter turn install. He just mentioned while we were meeting in person that it does seem to help with their product. So what we agreed to is to do a test run of three classrooms before this school year is out. So over the next week or two, we'll have three classrooms get installed. They'll have, you know, normal wear and tear until summer. And hopefully by that point, we can see if this solution is working or if it's not. It doesn't void whether we get those carpets replaced. It just changes what our decision is. So either the quarter turn works with the same color or it doesn't, and we need to try a different product. So both options are still part of our warranty or fall under our warranty claim. He just didn't want to replace all the rooms all at once, and then we still not be satisfied with the product. So our marmolium claim is actually moved to, we did reach out to the district legal counsel and are issuing a letter to CRC Construction Results, essentially for their noncompliant to move this into what we'll call our next phase. So they have the opportunity to either fight that and probably take it further into mediation following some of our provisions set forth in the contract documents, or they accept our letter and move on replacing the floor. So we did have, late part of February, actually had a really good meeting with the manufacturer's rep of the marmolium as well, of Forbo, who originally was not doing a lot to help us in our cause. And for, you know, certain circumstances, whether it's the floor has made its way through to different board shows and trade shows, or people just keep bugging him about it, it's become more of a apparent issue to him. And so jumped on our side to help support our claim of our noncompliant flooring. And obviously, there are still, you know, parts and phases that we need to get through until we have, you know, a moving or a full replacement claim in process. But, you know, I think the steps that we made, both with the manufacturer and issuing this letter, kind of were on the right path. So. Continuing on through our most recent project. So we did do a kind of final punch list review of the locker rooms the first week of March. We've had a few contractors in here over the last week, and we'll be closing out those punch list items by the end of the month. We do have our outstanding issue with the locker rooms is our epoxy walls and floors, the larger issue being the epoxy walls. And so right now, the plan is to sort of like the carpet rooms, we're going to be doing a test shower by removing what has been installed, reinstalling it with a different contractor. And once that installation has happened and we're satisfied, likely be completing the rest of the showers either during a designated period or at the end of the school year. So essentially, we have issued letters to the contractors, previous contractors who have done it stating that the owner's going to carry out their right to fix this work because they weren't capable of fixing themselves. And now we're just running through, making sure that we like the new contract that we selected, we like their product they put up, and then we'll go through and repair the rest of the showers. Some, our last two projects currently to close out our bond funds, our greenhouse and storage facility. So the storage facility is currently in permit review from the City of Watertown and Minspek, who's our authority having jurisdiction. And then our greenhouse is currently in structural plan finalized drawings. So construction drawing phase. We should have the drawings from A.J. Lauer really any day. And then we need about two weeks for a separate structural engineer to finish up on the foundation footing details for it. And then we'll get that into plan review as well with the city. So most likely, our pole shed will go up first, and then greenhouse should come right around June timeframe. Just a budget up here, update here. So you'll see from last month's budget, we did kind of move some of those fundings around. We had some unused fees that were in both our permits and owner costs and our fees and services category that I carried down to construction just to kind of more accurately represent what we have remaining. Again, the largest of those pieces being our greenhouse and pole shed. And then currently, what we're not representing is some of those abatement funds that were approved, but haven't been necessarily sold until midsummer. So once those are sold and we kind of reallocate those funds, the budget will change a bit. But as of right now, this is kind of up to date where we sit with everything remaining. So about $406,000 left in construction. The contingencies, both the cost to date in the contingency and then the final, are both just projections with closing out our last projects. So roughly about $510,000 remain. Any questions?
Chris, I'd like to say on behalf of the Bond Oversight Committee, we appreciate everything you've done for us the last several years. You've worked really hard to keep this stuff in mind, make sure things are going well. And we certainly had our hiccups along the way with contractors, but you've been there the whole time to make sure this stuff is getting done. And you've done a fantastic job. I'll be honest, we're going to miss you.
Yeah.
So we really appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you, thank you. I would also say it's, it is, it's also helpful, you know, meeting and presenting in front of Bakken and a board that understands that it's not, it's not if hiccups happen, it's win. And, you know, it's obviously our job to help you through those. But yeah, it's been a pleasure. So thank you, everybody.
And I know you have family in the area, so don't be a stranger.
Yeah, I'll still be around. Same phone number. Yeah, obviously, I have family.
If we need help.
Yes.
If we need help.
You could lose it if you want, but. Yeah.
We have been assured that we can call him at any time if needed. And yes, he's been more than willing to help us out.
Backup for the scoreboard, the lights.
That's right.
I think that was one of the funny stories. I don't know if we knew that story, but I think in the first home football game, when we weren't sure if the lights were going to work, we had backup plans beyond backup plans. And Chris actually came that night, and I think he helped out in multiple spots. Maybe he was in the press box by the end of the night, trying to run some of the scoreboard electronics. But that's just the kind of the guy he was. He stepped into roles that certainly went above and beyond the call of duty as a project manager. So again, we're very fortunate to have him and over the last, geez, almost three years now. And again, thank you for your time. Now, if you knew this either, this was Jeff's, Chris's first big project that he kind of ran on his own. So and so, yes, congratulations and thank you. And best wishes as you move on.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll miss you.
Thank you. All right, the next item, Item B, the Notice of Design. All right, the next item, item B, the notice of desire to negotiate. As part of the board agenda, we are advised that the SEIU Local 284, which represents the food service and the maintenance and custodial groups, have requested to enter into contract negotiations this year. So the personnel committee will be working on setting up those meetings as well, on top of all the other ones you have going on, so.
Yes, we will.
No action required on that one, except for.
Right, apologies here.
Yep. All right. Next up is the admin reports. We'll start off with Mr. Henen.
Good evening. I have three things. One is registration. We had all of our kids turn in their requests for next year, and the kids' credit, we had about ninety-five percent actually turned those in on time, and then we just had a few strikers. But I shared the, some of the information like with Darren already, really, the the biggest shift is just, you know, graduating, a really big senior class, and then you have an incoming freshman class, that's pretty big. So some of the things just naturally shifted, like we just have more, you know, FT allotted towards the freshman sections. But, you know, really, we still have a high percentage of juniors and seniors taking CAS courses. CTE numbers continue to be really solid. We're seeing really, really high numbers, like in welding again, the area of woods as well, I mean, just again, which is a nice, again, I think it's just, it's the, the idea that only certain kids take those classes, I think is just changing. We have a lot of kids that get just wanting to to experiment and take them. So the next month, we'll be used to building that master schedule, and again, I say assuming minimal staffing changes, because last year, we were very close, and we had a staff in believe, and it changed everything. You know, we're hoping that kids will get to see a draft of their schedule before they leave this year, just because we have a lot of data input already, so that has helped. We've been working on the profile of graduates. We've met with the high school, excuse me, the high school staff, middle school staff, and elementary staff. I know Amy is getting some feedback from the CLC leadership team as well. Darren, myself, and two high school staff also met with the Chamber of Commerce last week and got some feedback from them. It was, it was a pretty interesting discussion, just to kind of hear their perspective again on what they think, again, what they see for our graduates and and changes that they're seeing in the employment world. And then we're, you know, we're also looking to get some feedback from a, you know, students and possibly parents as well, just again, and compile all the data, and then hopefully by, you know, May, we'll be able to have a final draft. Again, what we're seeing is just, you know, not only just because of COVID, I think that's, it was just probably exaggerated, you know, or may brought more light some of the things about just, again, that some of the skills that they want our kids to have are, you know, obviously, they want the the work ethic, but it's just even just being like, you know, healthy, mentally and physically healthy, being able to work and being able to be a contributing member in our society and things like that. So it's been kind of good to hear the different perspectives in the sense of that, you know, I think there's, there's been some new things that have come about versus even five years ago. And then lastly, you know, it's about two months away, but graduation is May twenty-sixth, seven o'clock. You know, again, you'll get a formal invitation, but, you know, we'd love to have all of you there, because I know you guys typically, the new ones, you do play a part where you actually handle the diplomas, and so we'll send you a an invite. Now, one of the changes this year is I actually surveyed the seniors, and I kind of dispelled the myth that they don't read their emails, because magically, they do. I sent out a survey and asked them just one question, you know, with some directions that if we, you know, graduation, the question was, do you want it outside the stadium, inside the gym, or three is no preference? And I had almost a hundred responses, which is pretty high, considering it's about seventy percent of the kids, which normally you don't get that much of response from them. Seventy-two percent said they wanted outside, thirteen percent wanted it in the gym, fifteen percent, they said no preference or don't care. It's kind of funny, one person didn't realize I could see when they responded, and she responded four times, until I finally had to go check the box that they're going to respond once. And I went up to her, I said, you really want it outside? She goes, what do you mean? I said, well, you answered four times. Oh, you could see that? I'm like, yes, I could. She was the only one who did that. But they, they really want, I think, to at least us to explore, and I think we, we're pretty committed to trying it outside this year. Obviously, we have to have a backup plan in place, because we know if weather comes, we have to be able to move it inside. So there's still going to be some parameters around, there'll be eight tickets per graduate, just because, again, if we have to move it inside, we have to have space for kids, or space for the, you know, the fans are there. Found out tonight from Chris Reer, there's no high heels, for example, unless we have certain things laid down, and we have to be careful of the turf and the track and everything. So it will be logistically a little bit different in the sense of the gym is, it's a very cozy, pretty simple setting. But I think the technology that we're able to have out there with the, you know, the big screen and everything else can be pretty cool, and the kids really, really are excited about this opportunity. So, you know, we're hoping, you know, it'd be helpful if we could actually physically get out there, which is the next goal, hopefully, when we come back from break, we can actually walk out there and kind of map what we want to do. But just, I mean, that's something we're going to finalize, and and parents will get notified of this in the next few days, but the plan is to have it outside this year. So again, more details will come, I don't have a lot of answers yet, because it'll just be until we actually get out there, but that is the plan. And that's, that's what the kids wanted, and we said we would at least give it a shot, weather permitting. Any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Gerton.
Good evening, everybody. A couple of things here, transition planning is going really smoothly. I was over visiting the elementary school, and that went really well, meeting with all our fourth graders. We'll move ahead with them and have them come over and visit us at the middle school this spring. And basically, registration is really simple at that stage of the game, they have to decide on a music elective, so pretty seamless and simple for parents, and that has gone really well. We're also recruiting new students for our web program, which stands for Where Everybody Belongs, that is a student mentorship program where eighth graders partner up with incoming fifth graders. Ashley Wise runs that, and she said that we have about forty-five applications, so there's just still a very strong interest in eighth graders helping those fifth graders. Registration for sixth and seventh grade will take place after we get back from spring break. Couple of staffing things I wanted to talk about real quick. Tammy Vrasper is resigning, she's stepping down from her role as our paratechnician. She isn't with us for about fifteen years. She, I think, worked in the high school for about six, and then she transitioned over to the middle school, so I just want to thank her publicly for her service. Aaron Blair will be stepping into her position, she is a parent in our school, and she'll be coming on board at the start of April. Seventh grade, we still have that science position posted, and we're really looking at filling that for next year. Also, another unexpected resignation, Suzanne Earnhardt, our office secretary, our twelve month secretary, she's stepping down after twenty-two years in the district, so I want to thank her publicly for her years of service as well, and will be posting for that position shortly. Couple more quick things, eighth grade, I want to share something that I was really, really felt good about. We've been talking about the idea of starting what we call an eighth grade internship, and the vision for that was to promote more inclusion in our building, and I've been kind of waiting for a teacher to come along that really wanted to partner with me on that. We hired a new DCD teacher this year, Angela Cardinal. And so we talked about it, we decided fourth quarter, we were going to offer up the opportunity for eighth graders that would be interested in working with the students in her DCD program during one of their electives. So we met with each class and talked to the kids and thought we'd have a handful of students that were maybe interested, and we ended up with twenty-seven students responding, which is twenty percent of our eighth graders. So now we have the problem of kind of sifting and sorting through that tomorrow, and then we're going to go from there with trying to organize this program, but that's pretty exciting news. So kudos to our kids for being interested, and for Angela Cardinal for for organizing this type of a thing. So just really good stuff to feel good about in in terms of that inclusionary piece. The last thing I want to talk about, and again, something I'm really pumped up about, back in two thousand twenty-one, we finished our middle school renovation project, for the most part, we finished it. And that being said, one of the spaces that we are really happy with is what we call our innovation lab, that was an old school computer lab, probably an original from back in the early nineties. And the vision behind that, when we sat down to look at what that could be, it was about our profile of a graduate, it was about a STEM program, it was about hands-on learning, it was bringing in the computer science and the engineering programming and the biomedicine pieces, some of the pieces that the high school has been bringing forward in their programming. And so time went on, we went through COVID, well, we're finally at a point where we can take that next step. So we have the space, and we have a vision, and now we are ready to start bringing in STEM programming in the middle school next year. At the beginning of the year, I sat down with Mr. Schuler, and we kind of talked a little bit about the vision, and did some following up on some contacts, and really started to hone in on a program called Project Lead the Way, and started visiting with other districts that have been partnering with Project Lead the Way to bring in these STEM engineering experiences for kids. Long story short, we realized that Delano, in their intermediate school, has been running a very successful program for about fifteen years, and they have a, what you would consider a master teacher facilitator that welcomed us in, we took a tour, we did some observing, and just, we did a lot of networking. Long story short, we are next year, moving forward with starting to bring in some of the Project Lead the Way STEM units, and it'll be a two-year program in terms of the implementation of phase-in pieces. Some of the different topics will include in sixth grade, flight and space, energy and the environment, and then in seventh grade, we'll bring in a design and modeling unit. The following year, we bring in automation and robotics in the eighth grade. So we're really, really excited about this. There is a lot of staff development, there is a lot of ongoing professional development, curriculum support, and so for a teacher coming in, they'll get a lot of, they'll have to do a lot of upfront training, but also a lot of support in the network, which we think is just really important. This is outside the wheelhouse for some staff, so that being said, what I'm going to do with the technology position is I am going to repost it as a STEM position, to make sure that we are really clear on what we're looking for, and we can find, you know, the ideal person to come in and facilitate STEM in the middle school. So pretty excited about that. There are some costs upfront for the next two years that we're going to find a way to pay for. That might include going out and looking at outside donors and things of that nature. I've started a little bit of that work, reaching out to the Watertown Mayor Educational Foundation. We did write a grant through Project Lead the Way, but I am looking for any support that we can get for building this program in our middle school. This is really going to be a huge thing for our kids, it's time. And again, we have a beautiful space, and now it's time to start bringing in programming. This will impact all our kids, they will all have an opportunity to do this. And so, yeah, with that, I just, I'm geared up about it, but we're going to, we're going to start taking those steps, so please let me know if you have contacts about moving forward that, so.
What's the cost that you're looking to accomplish there?
So year one startup cost for what I call the the stuff, the pieces, is about seventeen thousand five hundred. Year two is sixteen thousand four hundred. And then from that point on, you know, the the equipment is is pretty much there and taken care of, and that's consumables, which the district has a budget to support, but there's about a thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar startup cost, and that's where we're really looking for the support on this. So I am willing to go out and talk to people, present, whatever we can do to get the word out, but this is really that twenty-first century shop class that we have been trying to fill a void around in our building for years, and it really ties in with the stuff that the high school is doing. So, pretty awesome. So I appreciate the district's support on that. Mr. Schuler was really the one that started, started me on the path of looking at Project Lead the Way, so appreciate that.
I would assume that curriculum is somewhat set or already described, but.
It is.
One suggestion I would make, just based on the community, is anything we can do to take STEM and turn it into STEAM and add A.
Yes.
Has the A in there, that might help find some of that money too, potentially.
You bet.
If there's an opportunity to build some of that in, I think we might know some people that could help.
We could make that happen.
We could look for here.
Absolutely. We could figure that out. It's all connected, and honestly, at the end of the day, it's about the thinking, it's about the type of thinking that you want kids to become comfortable with, and so that's, that's really the name of the game, and so this is just a really great way to do that work with kids, so. Yeah, so I'll keep you posted, but we can make it STEAM. We can make that happen. Please let me know, please let me know what we can do to promote this, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell.
Okay, just a couple updates from the elementary. Since the last time I was here, we were able to host our Camp Read a Lot Family Evening. Mrs. Brandonberg had spoke to that, we had to reschedule it because of those e-learning and snow days. We had a really great turnout and received really good feedback from families that attended. Huge shout out to Katie Brandonberg for organizing that event, and also to our student council for being there and assisting with calling bingo and running some of the different centers. We also had student council run a food drive. Our winning classes that brought in the most money or canned goods were Ms. Kuntz's class in fourth grade, Ms. Swartz's class in third grade, Ms. Roberts' class in second grade, Ms. Caro's class in first grade, and Ms. Libra's class in kindergarten. So those choices, those classes had a choice of a second recess as a prize or a fancy lunch. Third and fourth grade picked a second recess, and surprisingly, second, first, and kindergarten all picked a fancy lunch in the media center with tablecloths and pretend candles and quiet music. So it was a very busy day of extra recesses and fancy lunches, but it was very fun.
What'd you serve for fancy lunch?
You know, we didn't change anything special to serve, so they just grabbed their hot lunch tray and came across the hall and thought it was like the coolest thing. You could only do that at elementary schools.
It's all in the presentation.
Like violinist music playing, and then after a while, I'd say, do you want to get rid of the fancy music? Yeah! And we'd put on Taylor Swift, and they'd all dance. Last week was AmeriCorps Week, so we celebrated our two reading corps tutors that we have this year. So we have Pat Walsh and Beth Shute, who are our two tutors who work with students to provide additional reading intervention. For next year, we have been awarded two reading corps members as well as two math corps tutors, so math corps can work with kindergarten through third grade. Both of the reading corps positions have been filled, Pat is coming back for another year, and then we have a woman named Dana who will be joining us. We are looking for two math reading corps, or two math corps tutors. So we put that in the e-news, but if you know anyone, it's about thirty-five hours a week, I believe it's eighteen dollars an hour, but the beauty of it is you get scholarships through that that you can use for your own education, or you can give to your children or bequeath to grandchildren. So there's a lot of varieties of people who can step into those roles. They hand you all of the curriculum and give you all of the training, and we're really excited to offer that for our kids in math and reading now. Our kindergarten enrollment that we've been working hard on, we are now up to sixty-seven students as of last Friday. We're going to continue with personal phone calls and outreach to each of the families whose contact information we have to help them get their enrollment completed, if they're coming, but we just need that signed registration from them. And then our teachers just wrapped up another six-week PLC cycle, focused on plan, do, study, and act, where they set goals that were short-term for their students to accomplish and implemented strategies to move the needles for student success. Some of the teams are stretching their goal for a few more weeks to continue to see that high level of student growth, but there's been lots of rich discussion around what strategies they're finding to be impactful and what they're learning from one another, and also around knowing your impact, which is one of our two themes for the year. And lastly, just a shout out to all of the teachers, we were down to one recess staff member, and it's just not a good place to have one adult with a hundred-some kids. So we flipped supervision with teachers from the cafeteria to outside doing recess, and they've handled that like a champ, and it's great to see them outside with kids, engaging with them and playing with them, and helping to just make sure that we have the highest level of supervision that we can for them at that time. So, any questions?
Thank you. Ms. Dimmer.
Hello again. So I think first thing just to mention is that we are wrapping up our winter programming, and our summer book is out. We were really concerned about printing, so we worked to get that out, and it was out by March sixth. So registration opens on April third, a lot of fun classes, and if you're wondering, what did community do in two thousand twenty-two, you can check out the back with some information, a year in review. And then our biggest thing right now is opening up our enrollments for childcare and for preschool for this summer and for next year. So everything is open right now, and our numbers are starting to look like where we were right about last year. Right now for summer, we have a hundred and thirty-five students enrolled for this summer, still accepting registrations, and about a hundred and twenty-eight for next school year. So that's what we're. So that's what we have going on. Our Young Royals preschool is, um, we're currently at a hundred and seventeen register, enrollments. And for next year, we are at eighty-five, right about where we were last year. We start to pick up again in May and then June, July and August, a steady trickle of enrollments for preschool. So that's what's going on in community yet.
Thank you. Thanks.
Mr. Smansky.
Just a couple of things. Uh, first off, I'd like to officially thank the Royal Booster Club for the, another successful Booster Bash. I understand and appreciate all of the work that went into not only this event, but everything they do throughout the year. Without the Booster Club, uh, it would be a tough road for us to, to be on. Um, they do so much behind the scenes. We're just very, very grateful, very, very thankful for everything they've done for activities and our students. Hall of Fame update, we have made the decision to move the Hall of Fame. This year, um, twenty twenty-three was going to be the, uh, second induction ceremony. We've made the decision to move off the cycle that the high school league is on. This is also a redistricting year for the, for the high school league. So right now we don't have a football schedule. We don't really even know what district we're in. And we're waiting for that information to come out. And why that's kind of a big deal is we don't have homecoming yet for, for this fall. So once we get our football schedule, then we can plan homecoming, then we can adjust our schedules to try to get as many home events during, during, um, that week as, as possible. But in order, to make it easy, we'll wait another year and go twenty twenty-four. So we'll be in even numbered years and this won't be an issue. So it's, it'll just make things easier moving forward. So. We're still accepting nominations and we've received a few, so that's very, very exciting, but going to move it to twenty twenty-four. Spring participation numbers are still in process. We are very similar right now to what we were last year. And that's always a goal is to beat the year before. Uh, we're going to be close to that. Some highlights of the winter athletic survey, which we send to both our participants and our parents. But, um, some of the questions that I pulled out that were very, um, good to see. Do you believe your coach cares, um, or is concerned about you or concerned for you? And ninety-seven percent of our students felt that they are. Do you believe your coach believes in you and your team? Ninety-six percent said yes. Would you describe your experience this season as a positive one? Ninety-four percent said yes. And would you encourage younger athletes to be part of this program? Ninety-nine percent of the servant, of the students surveyed said, yes, they would. So that was very exciting, very good news for our coaches and our program. So. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Schuler.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few quick updates, um, in regards, oh, we lost our. One second here, let me fire that up. There we go. Um, sorry about that. Just a quick hiring update. Uh, as you know, our current, uh, special ed coordinator position has been posted. That will close in another week on March twenty-seventh. Um, I'm currently going through those applications and screening those. With our first round of interviews scheduled to be, uh, after spring break on April fourth. That group will be, um, two, uh, special ed representatives from each of our, uh, four buildings. Along with our special ed secretary and myself will be around in that first group. Our goal will be get that, um, that first round down to about two to three candidates for a final round. Uh, the final round will be our admin team and, um, school, uh, board member Getzko has kindly, um, joined us for that. And that'll be on April twelfth and that'll be in that afternoon. So we'll be, uh, giving the finalists, um, an opportunity to, uh, tour the district. And an opportunity to, uh, meet and greet with all the special ed staff if they so choose to come. And then we'll, um, obviously conduct that second round interview. So we'll have a pretty thorough process there. Currently we have about, um, about ten candidates, I think, that have applied so far. We put it out today with the, uh, Special Ed Directors Association. Hopefully we'll get another round, uh, after getting that in as well. So we'll see where that goes. Also, uh, you might have noticed too, that we are, we had the payroll specialist position, uh, Ms. Bregelmann's position, um, posted. We had, uh, no applicants for that part-time job. And we are looking to outsource that, um, and probably do our payroll, uh, in that venue. So, uh, more information will be coming forth with that as well. We're doing a little shifting internally in our district office, uh, with Ms. Ayton, um, on the HR side handling a little bit more now as, as Ms. Bregelmann is, is transitioning off, um, at the end of the month. So just more will come on that. Uh, Mr. Henin was, um, mentioning the profile of a graduate. Uh, that work has also been going on behind the scenes. As he mentioned, we had a really good, uh, group, um, conversation with the Chamber of Commerce, about twenty or so, um, business owners that were a part of that meeting that day. And, and, and Mr. Henin is exactly right. They had some great feedback. Couple of the interesting things that came to light for me is that we have some really great business owners in this community that really mentor some of our kids. I didn't realize some of the, the in-depth, uh, conversations that they're having, just supporting our kids, whether it be from personal hygiene to job, um, strategies and, and how to be on time, how to, how to count change. I mean, simple things that, you know, we sometimes take for granted, but they're spending that extra time, uh, with some of those students, uh, in their, in their workplaces. So that was really cool. So we appreciate their, their input. Also just wanted to note, um, our, uh, marketing communications committee, uh, did give approval, uh, to move forward with our strategic plan. The infographic that we've shown, um, and Robin Behrens has put in the kind of the final touches on that. So we got some really nice feedback there from that marketing communications group. So we will be bringing that forth to the board in the April meeting for your approval, um, to get that, uh, moving forward. Behind the scenes, we're identifying some of those look fours, those benchmark measuring points that we've talked about. And so, um, that is ongoing work, um, as we speak, we'll be able to share that too, uh, at the April board meeting, exactly what those will look like. We talked about delicious food and we can't quite probably match up with the elementary did, but I'll pass a couple of flyers out as your invitations. I don't have enough for everybody, but, um, Tahoe, um, our cafeteria service is providing some, delicious, uh, food on, uh, Tuesday and Wednesday with Chef Brian. So again, it's, um, paella, uh, the Spanish dish. Thank you, Ms. Schultz, for making sure I say that correctly. That is also an, an invite. Uh, you can come. Uh, high school lunch is basically from eleven to noon, middle school lunch, noon to, to one. Uh, again, just, uh, identify yourself and try some of Chef Brian's, uh, food. And if you don't know what paella is, it's, it's rice and chicken and it sounds like, uh, sausage and mussels, believe it or not. So, um, if you really want to diversify your palate, that might be a good opportunity to check it out. So we'll see. We're getting some looks. Mussels? You're not into mussels?
I like mussels.
Okay.
I just have a kid that's allergic to them.
Oh, we'll make sure we note that. Thank you.
Kids do mussels.
Yeah.
We'll be interested to see.
For me.
All right. And then lastly, not but at least, uh, I'll do my fourth coffee with the superintendent tomorrow morning. Uh, seven-thirty to eight-thirty over at the mayor, uh, fire department. So they were kind enough to open up their doors. Kind of curious, I want to tour. I always want to be firefighter and this is my opportunity, um, to, uh, to check out their new facility. Uh, they're pretty excited to share that. And again, if you're interested, uh, the coffee will be hot and, uh, I'm enjoying for some conversation.
It's not Folgers.
It is not Folgers. Thank you for clarifying. Good coffee. So that's all. I have any questions?
Thank you. Any, um, board member reports from the last month?
Personnel committee has been, uh, working diligently with the teachers on negotiations. I think we have one meeting that's scheduled for the twenty-third, but it sounds like that's going to get rescheduled. Uh, outside of that, we don't have anything else on the calendar as of yet, but we'll be looking again at more dates in April.
And then you have the ones.
Other ones.
Two more coming, but none on the schedule yet.
Anybody else? Uh, we had a finance committee meeting, um, kind of just went through sort of the, the budget to actual numbers in the district. Did some, uh, modeling for the upcoming years, uh, with the formulas as well as, um, projected enrollments. Kind of seeing where we're going on that. The BAC is still meeting every other week. We'll be down one, but Mr. Reer can take care of it, I think. Um, and then we had a community education meeting and we re-looked at the handbook, the catalog and just kind of got, you know, where we are from a programming perspective. Anything else? With that being said, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Why is everyone looking at Jim?
You know why. I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Getzko. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned, seven twenty-two.